Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uncle Sam lost his foot.
If I don't retrieve him.
Yeah, I hear.
Good morning and welcome to the October...this is October 28th.
Twenty-eighth, yes.
That's not what my agenda says.
I know.
Okay. I thought, my gosh, I lost it. There's Halloween fun going on up here. We have Commissioner Moore over at the side table. Stand-up Commissioner Moore. And we have Judge Judy as our clerk. And some of us just have our regular funny faces on. At 8:15 this morning, we had a CIC meeting, Community Investment Corporation meeting here. And I would like to move to item number 13 on the agenda, Community Development Department, and ask Rebecca Jones to come to the podium and outline these items for us.
Ms. Chair.
And I don't have the agenda in front of me. That's okay. Well, I walked up here without it. The first thing under item 13 is Walgreens Breakthrough Properties in the city of North Ridgeville, which is a grant request of $230,000 from CDBGED and $100,000 from the Lorraine County Revolving Loan Fund Committee. The Loan Review Committee met on this, and they recommended sending it to the CIC contingent upon receiving all the necessary documentation. The CIC at their meeting this morning reviewed this project and recommended to move it on to the Commissioner's Agenda with the caveat that it be sent to the state, but that it be approved by the Commissioners contingent upon the state's approval of all the necessary documentation.
Thank you, Rebecca. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Vacy?
No.
We had this item before us on the CDBG hearing. I'll move for approval then.
Contingent, do you want to?
Contingent upon, as recommended by the CIC, contingent upon the-
State approval.
-state approval of the document to be received.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Thank you. And the next item?
The next item is KNG, General Plug Manufacturing Company, Threaded Products in Grafton. They are also requesting infrastructure grant, $500,000 through the CDBGED program, $100,000 from the Lorraine County Revolving Loan Fund, and $300,000 from the State 629 grant. This will allow for the expansion of the industrial park in Grafton. That will...General Plug will expand, and Threaded Products will be moving from Michigan into Grafton, Ohio. There will be the creation of 51 manufacturing jobs with that. Lauren Falcone, who is the consultant for the village of Grafton and is with Pogemire Design, is here this morning, as is Kevin Flanagan with General Plug. So I would ask that Lauren come forward and give a brief overview of the project.
Lauren. Sheriff, if you want to adjust that shade, you can, so that sun isn't shining in the back.
Good morning. I'm Lauren Falcone with Pogemire Design Group. We are working with the village of Grafton, as well as Lorraine County, and General Plug, KNG, and Threaded Products on a community development block grant application. We've been working on this project for a couple of years, and we're getting it together. It's a $6 million total project, and it'll involve the expansion of General Plug, the extension of Commerce Drive, and also the relocation of Threaded Products out of Michigan. General Plug is a pipe plugs and products for the plumbing industry, and also Threaded Products is a state-of-the-art microiron foundry. So those companies will be in Grafton. Obviously, General Plug is already there, and will be expanding. And we're looking at about 51 new full-time equivalent jobs. The infrastructure project involves new road, water, sewer, sanitary, as well as electric. And we are going after a various number of funding sources, including the state of Ohio, CDBG Economic Development, state of Ohio 629 road funds, and also county revolving loan funds, with that being the smallest pot of $100,000 in grant funds. I don't know if you have any questions on the products or project. We have Kevin Flanagan here, Steve Fleming, and also John Hall, all from General Plug.
Do you have questions, Commissioner Vacy?
The only question I have is the one I always ask: Will we be hiring Lorraine County residents?
Commissioner, yes, right now, General Plug-
Kevin, can you come to the microphone? Please. Thank you, Kevin.
I'm Kevin Flanagan, and to answer your question, Commissioner, yes, General Plug right now, over 90 percent of our workforce is and does live in Lorraine County, and we would anticipate that same percentage with the new jobs.
Good. Thank you.
Great. The state already has a draft application with them right now that they're reviewing, so we're asking today that you pass legislation and sign the original application to send down to the state.
Do you have any further questions?
No.
I'll move for approval of the application as presented to us.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Secretary, go back. I remember one more.
Number one, Job and Family Services bills?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye, with the exception of number three, page 13.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
There were no advances or repayments, requisitions?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
Some move.
Okay. Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
So you need an executive session?
If we could take...we have some new orders. We want to take a look at them.
Okay.
Under Commissioners, number 10, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for Lorraine County Golden Acres and Lorraine Medine Community-Based Correctional Facility. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on October 29th and November 5th. Bids will be open at 2:00 PM on November 12th in the Commissioners' Back Conference Room.
What are the bids for?
Food.
Food bids?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorize a partnership between Lorraine County Dog Kennel and Lorraine County Auditor's Office to implement a new program to defray the cost of medical care of canines in custody of Lorraine County Dog Kennel. Specialty tags will be offered to dog owners for an additional $5 registration fee. This participation is voluntary, and owners purchasing the alternate tag will receive a specially-designed heart-shaped dog tag. The additional fees collected will be deposited in a separate sub-fund in the Dog and Kennel Fund, which shall be used to provide medical care to injured canines in custody of Lorraine County Dog Kennel and to offset all program and administrative costs.
Do you want to talk about this a little bit, Mr. Cortez?
I'd be glad to, Commissioner. One of the things we've encountered significant difficulty with is when animals are captured or brought to the pound in a distressed condition. Sometimes it's a balancing act between whether we continue to keep the animal or that we euthanize the animal, which is what the code calls for. We're also able to provide medical care for the animal, but the costs are quite high, and it's difficult to explain to most residents in Lorraine County that we're providing this medical care to an animal who eventually may be euthanized anyway because it wasn't adopted. So it was thought that reaching...trying to balance the goals of the folks possibly to the humane society and the people that want us to do more with adoption, and the folks that want us to be cost-efficient with their money at the pound, that allowing voluntary contributions with a special... get a special tag and use that money to offset these medical costs. So in theory, we should be able to provide the medical care to the animals in distress and not use taxpayers' dollars that they're paying on their primary tag. So we came up with this program. Now, it is working in one or two other counties in Ohio with some varying success. We really don't know how it's going to work here. We'll have to give it the first year, take a look at it, and see. Program costs identified right now are about, I think there's probably going to be about $800 or $900 for printing and tags to start with, and there'll be some other programmatic costs. But they shouldn't be so significant. There should be quite a bit of money left. 10 percent of the tags sold here raise about $15,000. About 30,000 tags sold a year. So if we get 3,000 tags at $5 a tag, that gives us 15,000 to operate with. And that'll give us a nice sum. But recognizing that providing even minor medical care to an animal can run $700, $800, so it's not going to be that huge. 15,000 sounds, wow, 15,000, but the realization is it's really just scratching the surface of probably what's going to be necessary in the future if we continue this.
You have questions?
No.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Establish Lorraine County contribution shares for non-bargaining union employees for the year 2005.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Community...yeah, under Community Development Department number 14, instruct the clerk to advertise notice to the public of a finding of no significant impact notice of intent to request release of funds for North Ridgeville Walgreens Community Development Block Grant, Economic Development Infrastructure Grant Funds, and the revolving loan funds. This notice will be in the Chronicle-Telegram on October 29th, 2004.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Award various contracts to provide emergency home repair assistance for Lorraine County CDBG Fiscal 2003 Emergency Home Repair Activity Account, 12603-2501-4504221, James &amp; Ann Simons at 93 Pike Court, LaGrange, for electrical and roof repairs. Quotes were received on October 14th. The best and most responsive quotes for the repairs were received from Odds &amp; Ends at 48683 State Route 18 in Bryan Township in the amount of $5,200 for a roof repair, and Minority Electric Company, Inc. at 200 East 28th Street, Lorraine, in the amount of $1,900 for electrical repairs. Two by the Lumpkin at 803 West Drive, Sheffield...that should be Sheffield Lake, for the replacement of furnace and water heater. A quote was received from one contractor on September 24th, Geisel Heating, Inc. at 633 West Broad Street, Alariah, in the amount of $6,402, and Clara Demore at 221 State Street North in Rochester Village for a roof repair. Quotes were received from two contractors on October 14th. The best and most responsive quote was received from Odds &amp; Ends at 48683 State Route 18 in Bryan Township in the amount of $7,800.
Some move.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Emergency Management, award contract to Atlas Electrical Construction, Inc., Alariah, Ohio, in the amount of $52,568 for a backup electrical generator for Lorraine County Garage. Two bids were received on August 12th, and this was the most responsive. This general will be part of an overall county-wide emergency response plan to provide centralized repair and/or fueling capabilities to all emergency forces should the need arise. Lorraine County will receive 100 percent reimbursement for the equipment through the U.S. Department of Justice WMD Grant Program. $48,000 was available for this project, and Lorraine County Engineer will cover the remaining funds needed to complete this purchase.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve and enter into contract with Redus Christian Academy for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services. The maximum amount reimbursed for a child enrolled in the childcare center is based on state reimbursement ceilings, which are set for the age of the children and the amount of time the child attends the center. This contract is effective November 1st through December 31st, and authorize the Director of Job and Family to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court request for funding in the amount of $25,787 from the Juvenile Accountability Block Grant. This will provide for the continuation of the Mayor Project to encompassing the Court's restitution program, which holds youth accountable by providing them with community service opportunities to pay back restitution to the victims and the common ground outdoor counseling experience for court-involved youth. There is cash match from the general fund in the amount of $2,867.78.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize the creation of Fund 249, Juvenile Indigenous Alcohol Program. This is in accordance with ORC 2743.191. This fund shall recognize the fees and the fines associated with the program.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, accept on behalf of Brownhound Township Trustees the improvements and enter into a one-year maintenance agreement for Mantle Rock Estates Subdivision. Don Mould is the developer. Mantle Rock contains 16 lots, 129 and 12 through 17, and the developer installed asphalt and storm sewers, which have been approved by the county engineer and accepted by the trustees. The plat from Mantle Rock Estates is recorded in Lorraine County Record of Plats, volume number 67, pages 25 and 26. Osage Drive, Road number T263, extending east from First Section, completed previously, 148.76 feet or 0.028 miles in length. Font Circle, Road number T282, extending north from Osage Drive, 130.8 feet or 0.025 miles in length. Whitetail Run Road, T283, extending south from Osage Drive, T263 to Portman Road, County Road 102, 15 plus 51.24 feet or 0.294 miles in length.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Commissioners on behalf of Lorraine County Sheriff to enter into agreement to management operating agreement with Aramark Oakbrook Terrace, Illinois, for providing food service to Lorraine County Correctional Facility inmates. This contract is effective February 1st, 2004 through January 31st, 2007, with two one-year renewals. The price per meal is based on the inmate population, and there is an inflationary raise tied to the Consumer Price Index.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
I would be remiss this morning if I didn't point out that my esteemed colleague to my right last Friday received the first-ever Mike Whitmore Award from the Community Alliance for fostering good intergovernmental cooperation. He's a little bit humble, and I wanted to point out that if you have any questions from the media, we can talk about afterwards, but he was very deserving of that recognition. And he'll sit here embarrassed for a while, but I wanted to bring it up. With that, I have no further comments. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Mr. Ennis, Assistant, can I rest you?
If we are going to have an executive session, there is a matter of litigation. I need to update the Commissioners' vows.
Commissioners, report?
I have nothing.
I have two items. Karen Davis asked me to announce the Main Street Alurias Take-A-Stroll being held on Thursday, November 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the atrium of Alurie City Hall. I guess the public is invited, and they're going to have rewards and awards and remarks. And also, that same night, Lorraine County Visitors Bureau is hosting the Lorraine County Beautiful Awards at Avon Oaks. So there are two nice events. If anybody's interested, you can contact Main Street Alurie and/or Lorraine County Visitors Bureau.
We're up front award. We have been nominated.
They have over 50 applicants for the awards.
I'm believing that we're probably-
You're hoping. You're hoping.
I think there's a better building than ours?
I knew you wouldn't. And Jim talked about how deserving Jerry is. I thought it was kind of neat that Jerry was also surprised. He didn't realize that he was going to get that award. And it's nice to see somebody honored, but also surprised. Surprises are fun. It's always neat. That concludes my remarks.
Any old business?
None.
New business?
None.
Board correspondents?
Move the reading be waved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board? David?
Morning, Commissioners. Two very brief things. I note that in the Commissioner's Agenda on October 14th, there was an item to instruct the clerk to advertise request for proposals for the Workforce Development Agency. And it was supposed to be in the Morning Journal on the 19th and 26th of October. And I've been sort of looking for that and haven't seen it. And I just wondered if there was...if I've missed it. But I tried to check both papers for the last two weeks. And so I would like, if there's some explanation of why that didn't get in, I'd like that. And my other thing is only to say that in addition to not picking on anybody about whether Halloween is religious or irreligious, and whether wishing people a safe Halloween is a good thing or not, I hope everybody also will vote before the next Commissioners' meeting.
Oh, yes.
But is there any particular-
No, we'll have to look into it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Does Ma'am come to the microphone, please?
Hi, my name's Sharon Hamrick, and I do dog rescue, and I bail all my dogs out of Lorraine County Dog Pound. So I'm really glad that you guys are going to do this thing with the license. I think that's a very good idea. But I have wrote a letter, and I hope you will bear with me, because I'm a little nervous about reading this. "Attention, Lorraine County Commissioners, I am writing this letter to advise you of an incident that occurred at the Lorraine County Dog Pound on Friday, October 22nd. I had been at the county dog pound on Tuesday, October 19th, and seen a dog that I wanted to adopt. I asked Tom Majoras when the dog would be ready for adoption, and he said on Friday, October 22nd. On October 22nd, at 9:55 AM, I arrived at the dog pound. There was another vehicle in the lot when I pulled in. I went inside at 10:00 AM and told the secretary that I was here to adopt the dog in Cage 55. The lady said that the lady that was in the vehicle came into the building at that time. The secretary, Patty Sunnigal, told me that the dog...that the woman who came in was called by Stan, the dog warden, to come in and look at the dog. Patty informed us that we had to fill out a form. I saw that the lady had circled that she was there only to look. I told Patty that this was not proper procedure and that I was here to adopt the dog and not just look at it. Patty buzzed the lady into the back to look at the dog. I told Patty this was not right, and she stated this was a friend of Stan's, and he had called her to come and look at this dog and to spend some time with the dog. I again told her it was not procedure, and I wanted to adopt the dog. Patty walked away in a huff, and she said she was going to page Stan. I later learned that Stan was at a conference, and Gennaro was in charge. The lady came out of the back with the dog and took it outside. I again told Patty that the procedure had always been first come, first served. Patty said that the woman was sitting in the parking lot since 9:30 AM. I explained that I was there to adopt the dog, as I had already seen the dog before and had already made up my mind to adopt. The doors do not open until 10:00 AM, and I had entered the building before this lady and said that I wanted to adopt the dog in Cage 55. I again told her that I wanted to adopt the dog, and Patty just walked away. Tom Majoras came out from the back, and I explained to him what was going on. Tom told me to fill out the paperwork for the dog license stating, "Here, the dog is yours. First come, first served. You are here to adopt, not to look." Patty came back out, and I told her I wanted to pay for the dog. Patty tried to grab the license form out of my hands and started arguing with me. The other dog wardens, Gennaro Nelson, came out from the back. I asked Tom, Gennaro, and Nelson if I was to correct...if I was correct in the adoption policy, and they all said yes. I told them that they needed to tell the secretary. Patty huffed off down the hall, saying, "Excuse me, tough shit." Since Gennaro was in charge while Stan was gone, I asked him to make a decision. And Gennaro told me the dog was mine, but would not enforce the decision to the secretary. I asked Patty to get...I asked him to get Patty so I could pay for the dog. Patty came out and said, "No, I could not adopt the dog because Stan's friend was still looking at the dog outside." The lady came back into the pound and said she wanted the dog. Patty then decided that we would do a lottery. The lottery is only done when two or more people come into the dog pound to adopt a dog at the same time. The lady came into the pound after I did and only wanted to look at the dog. I did win the lottery, but Patty walked away and refused to take my money. I have adopted many dogs from Lorraine County Dog Pound throughout the years. I place all my rescue dogs in good and loving homes. I immediately take all my rescue dogs to my veterinarian before bringing the dogs to my kennel. At the veterinarians, they receive their shots and are spayed and neutered. I do not rescue dogs for profit. I rescue for the love of the animal. I am very familiar with the proper procedures at the pound, and Patty did not follow proper procedures. I was highly offended with Patty Sunnigal's actions and her language. I do not feel this was proper to treat the public. I have never been treated this way before by anyone at the dog pound. The employees at the dog pound have always gone out of their way to be courteous and helpful. I do not wish to cause a problem, but Patty is not a good representative of a county employee who deals with the public. I also have a copy for each one of the Commissioners, and I also have a receipt where Gennaro took my money, because Patty refused to take my money. She walked off down the hall. And I have a time that shows when I did pay for the dog. I paid for the dog at 10:17. Normally, when you walk into the dog pound, you say, "I'm here to adopt a dog." You fill out the paperwork, unless, like I said, there's more than one person there. You fill out the paperwork, and you're out of there by quarter...10 after at the latest. By the time you load your dog up, you're on your way. But at that time, it took me 10:17 to adopt this dog. After I left, I did take her to my vet. He booked her in. She's scheduled for a spay on Thursday. I do have a home waiting for her, so I just wanted to let you know. And I do have copies for you if I can give those to you.
You certainly can. Thank you for your comment. Can you leave to respond or investigate?
Well, certainly, I'll take a look into it. I will go to this length. I will verify out that most of what has been said here is accurate, the way we do conduct our business. If people arrive at-
The license and Gennaro.
If people arrive at the pound at the same time, they... they will normally be a lottery for an animal. I'll take a look into that and see what occurred there. Obviously, if the conduct is such, it's not conduct that we condone, and we'll deal with that after we do an investigation, which we will. The...as far as who was looking at the dog, who wasn't looking at the dog, and some of our employees' roles, I can't comment on that. But I will have Mr. Siniker respond to who was there first and who wasn't there first. And I'm glad that she received the animal. We've worked with this lady quite a few times, and golden retrievers, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. I've pulled...like, last week, I pulled two dogs out of there, and there's...we placed one within a week. She had already been spayed, so that was a really good thing. She lives in Avon. If you go past and look at license, you will see how many dogs I've placed.
No, I think we're familiar with each other.
Okay. And you...I can call any one of my rescue people who have my dogs, and I can bring books that show you that I get Christmas cards every year for my dog people. I send them cards. Like, this dog that I just adopted, I took a picture of her.
Let me state this. Whether...who was there first, who wasn't there first, while it's still important, how you're treated is more important to me.
Yes, sir. And I've never been treated like that.
And I will personally look into that, no matter how difficult the situation. We maintain a steady balance. And you and I will dialogue after. I've had some time to do an investigation. I know sometimes people arrive at the same time. They sit in the parking lot. My firm instructions to the pound people is that there is no preferential treatment given to anybody. I'm tired of arguing over whether the clock ticked two seconds past 10, or they got in the door two seconds before. The door's not supposed to be unlocked until ten o'clock by our clock.
Right. And that's, that was what happened. It was open at ten.
Right. And there's multiple people in the lot. Who rushed the door first is not an issue either. They're standing in the lobby, or we go to the lottery system. So we'll, we'll take a look into all this. As I indicated, I'm confirming quite a few things that you've indicated that are procedure there. I'm glad that you know the procedure, so obviously, it's working in some respects. So we'll get back to you, okay?
The, the thing is, is like I said, when I got there, if you're there to adopt a dog, you're there to adopt. You don't have the time to go back and look at it if someone's there to adopt the dog right then. And I was there to adopt, and she went back to pull the dog out and spend time with it. That's not proper procedure.
You know, I, I gotta reserve comment on that because I'm not sure if somebody's there looking at a dog or somebody comes to adopt, what we would do. I don't think we've ever been faced with that.
The dogs are there for three days, legal limit. I had saw the dog on Tuesday. This lady could have gone any time from Tuesday until Thursday to look at that dog as well.
I understand.
And the dog was put up for adoption on Friday.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a look at the procedure.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment, Sharon.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board? If not, I will be going to executive session for personnel issues that is outlined by the Administrator, and for legal issues is outlined by the Assistant Prosecutor.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Commissioners have reconvened from executive session, authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the-
Return to me, okay?
Sorry sheet for various employees within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
I move. Okay, I'll second.
Discussion? Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. I move return.
Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Return.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Grass clippings, food scrap, garden remains, leaves, all have one thing in common. They can all be composted. All these things will go back to nature, using only air and water. Nature will recycle these and numerous other items back into rich soil to benefit your garden or shrubs. Turn it on the ground or tumble it in special drums. Composting saves landfill space and can save you money. Composting can turn into a fun project for the entire family.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh-three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh-seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh-seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's waterwell. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskyville, today the intersection of Roots Fifty-Eight and One Thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh-nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossin in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossins were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Alaria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Alaria and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Alaria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero French General Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen seventeen, moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, The Spirit of Seventy-Six. In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only coed, but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on post and not the office. As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LeGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name LeGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LeGrange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LeGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcocks, who built a first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Bing- In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton. But that was soon changed, as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.